Teresa, do you have the ability to unmute everybody at once for the pledge?
Yeah.
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay. It's 9:00 AM on Monday, August 31st. I'm calling to order the special meeting of the Hilton, Town of Hilton Head Island Board of Zoning Appeals. We begin all our meetings with a joining in the pledge of allegiance. So I've got the flag. If you would join me, I pledge allegiance to the flag.
(Inaudible).
And to the Republic of America. Teresa Haley, are we in compliance with the Freedom of Information Act?
Yes, sir, we are.
Okay, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Johnson?
Present.
Mr. Walzak?
Present.
Mr. Katriere?
Present.
Ms. Bryson?
Present.
Mr. White?
Present.
Ms. Loudermilk?
Present.
Dr. Ponder?
Present.
Okay, we have a quorum of all members today. Thank you for attending and to our guests. We need to conclude today's meeting by 10:30 as there is a special meeting of Town Council set for 11:00. And the live streaming virtual technology only allows one meeting per minute. Since we really only have one case to hear today, I'm confident we can be done by 10:30 and want to thank everybody for their perseverance at the July meeting where we went for a number of hours. First item of business is for approval of the agenda. Does anyone on the board have any changes to make to the agenda? Hearing none, I'll call for a motion to approve the agenda. Mr. Walzak, look like you're ready to make that motion.
Sure, I'll move to approve the agenda.
Do we have a second? Second, Bryson. Teresa, would you call the roll?
Mr. Johnson?
Present.
You're voting on... Excuse me, Teresa. Bob, we're voting on approval of the agenda, so yes, sir.
I approve.
There you go, thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Walzak?
Yeah, for the motion.
Mr. Katriere?
For the motion.
Ms. Bryson?
For the motion.
Mr. White?
For the motion.
Ms. Loudermilk?
For the motion.
Dr. Ponder?
For the motion.
Thank you. The minutes of the July 29 meeting are approved as written. I'm sorry, because the agenda wasn't getting ahead of myself. Now we need to consider the minutes of the July 29 special meeting. Those were in your packet. Before we entertain a motion, does anyone have any changes they want to recommend to the minutes of July 29? Hearing none, I'll call for a motion. I'm sorry. That was Stephen Ryan joining us, our attorney. Chair, entertain a motion to approve minutes of the special... I made the motion.
I like the cradle.
I got you, Patsy. Need a second. John, there you go. Lisa, you're ready? Lisa Loudermilk? We have a motion second to approve the minutes of July 29. Teresa, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Johnson?
Bob? I want to get the verbiage wrong again.
Just approve or...
I approve.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Walzak?
For the motion.
Mr. Katriere?
For the motion.
Ms. Bryson?
For the motion.
Mr. White?
For the motion.
Ms. Loudermilk?
For the motion.
Dr. Ponder?
For the motion.
Okay. The minutes of the special meeting of July 29 are approved by the board. We move on to an introduction about citizen comments. Teresa, I believe you have something to explain to us.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. There were several ways in which citizens could participate in today's public hearing for the variance application. Staff received one letter on the application, which was provided to the board for review and made a part of the record. There were no comments submitted through the town's open town hall portal, nor were there any requests from citizens to participate during the meeting by phone.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Right ahead.
Missy, Ms. Lewick has an update on the letter that we received.
Okay.
Could she speak to that?
Sure, Missy.
Hi, Missy Lewick, for the record. This morning, we received an updated letter from Forest Beach Owners Association that is in support of the site plan that is before us today for Three Alder Lane.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have any question about that letter? Hearing none, we'll move on. The next item on the agenda, item number eight, has to do with postponements approved by the chairman. We had a variance request, 1001529-2020. Bruce Goff was requesting a variance from the LMO setback standards and buffer standards for a home to be built in an adjacent street setback and buffer at 102 North Forest Beach Drive, requested a postponement pursuant to the rules and procedures. As Chairman, I approve that postponement. And so, Missy, help me here, was that the one that requested two months or three?
Two months.
Two months, okay.
Two months.
So the 102 North Forest Beach request has been postponed for two months under the authority of the chairman. If a subsequent postponement was requested by the applicant, then that would need to be voted on by the whole board. And I believe that postponement has been conveyed to the applicant. Our next item of business, number nine, is a public hearing for variance 001461-2020. Michael Leicher is requesting a variance on behalf of the property owner from LMO Section 163106H4B in the Forest Beach Neighborhood Character Overlay District for a proposed driveway to be built parallel to the adjacent use buffer and exceeding the 24-foot maximum. The property address is Three Alder Lane. If you'll bear with me a minute, I'll explain the procedures that will follow. Staff will have a period of 20 minutes to present facts and applicable legal principles regarding the variance. During staff's presentation, members of the board will have the opportunity to ask questions upon appropriate recognition. The applicant will then have 20 minutes to present facts and applicable legal principles relating to the variance. During the applicant's presentation, board members will have the opportunity to ask questions of the appellant. Staff will be allowed five minutes for rebuttal. And then, following the presentations, board members may ask such additional questions of the parties as board members deem appropriate. Members of the public were offered the opportunity to submit comments on the variance request via electronic submission or by signing up with the town's website. Following presentations by the staff and the applicant and questions by the board, we'll call on the board secretary again to advise us regarding any of those comments. At the conclusion of the public comment period, board members will then discuss the variance and vote on a motion to either approve the variance, prove the variance with conditions or modifications, or deny the variance. The motion must, as a minimum, contain a finding of facts, the maker of the motion deems material to the decision, and appropriate references to the relevant criteria of the LMO. Following the vote, staff will prepare a written notice of action setting forth the decisions of the board as well as the findings of fact and conclusions adopted by the board in reaching the decision. The notice of action shall be sent to the applicant and the owner of the property, if different, by certified mail. And the decision, the board, shall be final upon mailing of the notice of action. Before we hear from the staff, Teresa, I think you may have been on before we started. I am leaving town for about eight days as soon as we conclude. If you could have a signature page ready for the motion and notice of action, I can come by town hall before I leave and sign that, and you can take care of the rest of it with the maker and the secondor of the motion. Will that work?
Mr. Chairman, it's been about a month. At our last meeting, you came by and provided those signature pages for today's meeting.
You're right, it's been a month, and I had forgotten. We're ahead of the game. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right. The motion, or the public variance on the Three Alder Lane request, and we'll start with by hearing, I think, Missy, you're going to be the presenter of this. So please proceed.
Mr. Chairman, this is Teresa. I did want to note, we do have some staff members present in the room with us. Missy and I are here. Ms. Dixon is here, Ms. Lewis, and Mr. Newman.
Okay, and I believe I saw Stephen Ryan get on as well.
Yes, we have Stephen Ryan on the line and Mr. Gruber.
All right. Ms. Lewick, are you ready?
I am just getting my screen ready.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Missy Lewick, senior planner, for the record. And we are discussing a variance request, number 0014612020, at Three Alder Lane. So the request is a variance request from the applicant, Michael Leicher, who on behalf of the property owner is requesting a variance from the Forest Beach Neighborhood Character Overlay District LMO section for a proposed driveway to be built parallel within the adjacent use buffer exceeding the 24-foot width maximum. And again, the request is located at Three Alder Lane. Here is, in the blue area here, you can see where the property is located. The property is accessed through the Marriott Grand Ocean Development, and again, is located within the Forest Beach Neighborhood Character Overlay District. To start off with a little bit of background and some historical imagery here, you can see a little bit of, there is a concrete wall that is pertinent to the request, and I don't know if you can see my cursor or not, but it's a little bit temperamental. But there is, you can see on this aerial from 1986, the concrete wall has been constructed and can be located on this aerial image. This picture might be a little bit blurry. Here, you can clearly see the development of the Marriott Grand Ocean, and you can see the top of the concrete wall in the image that's provided. Also, during the timeframe between 1986 and 1999, Alder Lane was removed from its street right-of-way and was replaced with a multi-use pathway. And Alder Lane now functions as a named drive aisle, and it is now incorporated as part of the Marriott Grand Ocean Development. The concrete wall is in this image here. The concrete wall, according to the applicant, is under Marriott ownership and control. The concrete wall runs in front of the subject property and does block direct access to this parcel. You can clearly see the image of the multi-use pathway, which is in the, what was the street right-of-way for Alder Lane. Here are some additional pictures of the subject property. You can see from the top image, the number three address is where the current driveway is proposed and where the break is in the wall currently. Where the community development truck is parked there is the driveway apron that currently exists that was access to the former home that had been demolished. The applicant has stated that requests to the Marriott Real Estate Division regarding removing the wall for more direct access has been made, and conversations are ongoing, but no outcome has been determined on removal of that wall. Here we have the proposed site plan. This site plan has been altered slightly from what was included in the packet, namely the location of the buffer and setback has changed. So on this drawing, I've outlined and read where the setback and buffer locations are for the parcel. It was, we had previously shown on the site plan that there was a 20-foot adjacent street setback from Alder Lane, but because Alder Lane is no longer an adjacent street, it's a drive aisle. It now has a 10-foot setback and buffer from all four sides. The area of the variance is highlighted in yellow, and that area is approximately 230 square feet. The proposed house plans utilize the existing driveway curb cut that is there existing and utilizes the break in the concrete wall. So due to the home design, it necessitates the driveway to make a 90-degree turn and then run parallel within the buffer. Our land management ordinance allows driveways to run perpendicular through the buffer but not parallel. Additionally, the driveway area exceeds the 24-foot width maximum. And again, this property does not have an adjacent street buffer, but it has four 10-foot setback and buffers from all four sides. Here's the site plan's, then, a little bit more, where you can see the setback and buffer areas in red, and again, you can see the area of the variance zone. Here are some more pictures of the site. According to building division records, there was a house on the lot that was demolished in March of 2009. According to the applicant, the former home utilized the driveway location that's currently proposed. And based on a site visit, the pathway has existing traffic control with yield signs and stop, yield markings on the path that would indicate that they were yielding to a former driveway that was in that location. And finally, to reiterate the request, the applicant is requesting a variance to allow the construction of a driveway parallel within the adjacent use buffer exceeding the 24-foot width maximum. Now we're going to go through the variance criteria. Criteria number one, there are extraordinary and exceptional conditions pertaining to the particular piece of property. The subject lot is .195 acres in size. It's 85 feet wide, adjacent to Alder Lane. The subject lot has a concrete wall owned by the Marriott that's approximately 56 feet long that runs along Alder Lane in front of the property, which restricts direct access to the Alder Lane drive aisle. The subject lot was previously developed with a single-family home, which was demolished in 2009, which had driveway access to Alder Lane in the current location where the proposed driveway is requested. DAF concludes that this application does meet this criteria because there are extraordinary and exceptional conditions that pertain to this particular piece of property. The concrete wall in front of the lot limits and restricts access to Alder Lane and limits development of the lot. Criteria two, these conditions do not generally apply to other properties within the vicinity. The subject property has a concrete wall located in front of the property within the Alder Lane right-of-way, which does restrict access to Alder, the Alder Lane drive aisle. This wall applies to very few other properties within the vicinity. The neighboring property at Four Alder Lane also has the same concrete wall in front of their home, and DAF finds the application meets this criteria because the extraordinary conditions do not generally apply to other properties within the vicinity. Criteria number three, because of these conditions, the application of this ordinance to the particular piece of property would effectively prohibit or unreasonably restrict the utilization DAF finds that because the home could be reduced in size or the driveway access redesigned so that it meets all of the LMO requirements, DAF concludes that this application does not meet the criteria because while there are extraordinary or exceptional conditions to the, that pertain to the property, the home design could be altered to provide access from the north side of the home, which would eliminate the driveway in front of the adjacent use buffer. Criteria number four, the authorization of the variance will not be of substantial detriment to adjacent property or the public good, and the character of the zoning district where the property is located will not be harmed by the granting of the variance. DAF had received one letter from Forest Beach Association that was not in favor of this request, and then received another letter this morning that is in support of this variance request. The variance approval would allow removal of trees and vegetations from the required buffer, which could have a negative effect on the neighborhood. However, DAF concludes that this application does meet the criteria because the proposed variance will not be a substantial detriment to the adjacent property, the public good, or the character of the zoning district where the property is located. So because the request only met three of the four criteria, DAF recommends denial because all four criteria have not been met. This concludes my presentation at this time. Please let me know if there are any questions.
Thank you, Missy. I'll start with a couple of questions. Could you explain again what the current definition of alter, pardon me, Alder Lane is? I think, did you call it a drive aisle as opposed to a street?
That's correct. It is a drive aisle and not a street. Right now, there is, within the former right-of-way, it contains a multi-pathway. And Alder Lane is created within the Marriott Grand Ocean Development as a drive aisle.
Do other residences use Alder Lane to access their property?
I believe so.
And what are the implications of being a drive aisle as opposed to a street or some other classifications, a 10-foot setback as opposed to 20?
That's correct. It would have been, if the street right-of-way would have been where the pathway is, then it would have been a 20-foot adjacent street setback and buffer. And in this case, because it is not classified as an other street, it is just another adjacent use, and so therefore, it is 10 feet setback and buffer. Either way, if it were classified as a street, it would still necessitate a variance request. So even if it was an other street, or as it is right now, just as an adjacent use, there's still a variance area that would be in question.
Okay. Could we go back to your slide that showed the yellow highlighted area?
Sure. You want this, is this one good?
That's fine. The staff report says that the variance request exceeds the 24-foot maximum allowed, but how much does it exceed 24 feet by? Much additional version, I guess?
Right now, as you can see, on the north end of the property, there's a 14-foot driveway that comes in, and that 14-foot is in the buffer. And then you have the highlighted in yellow portion that includes the area that runs parallel. And then, that area says in its length is 23 feet, so there's more than 24-foot of width within the buffer, therefore exceeding the buffer width of driveway.
Okay, I'm still confused, though. If 24 feet is permitted, how much more is being requested in this variance? All I know right now is it exceeds 24. My question is, how much does it exceed 24 feet by? Maybe that's a question that can be answered by the applicant.
Okay. So in this image, maybe you can see a little bit better, but the, and I don't know if you can see my cursor or not, but...
We can.
Okay. So there's a 14-foot width that's identified here of driveway that comes in, and then, and that's in the buffer. And then here, you have additional width that's labeled as 23 feet that is also in the buffer. They tapered driveway into the third bay, which is just for, not for vehicle, and that is outside of the buffer. And so what, the area of the request is the area that highlighted in yellow, and it includes both the area that is parallel within the buffer and then the area that exceeds the width. The intent of the width, it, that, the ordinance didn't anticipate that, they anticipated that you would be coming in perpendicular to your site, the buffer, and that you didn't want to have an extra wide driveway coming in. That's the intent of the 24-foot width. In this case, they have only a 14-foot opening driveway curb cut opening. However, they do exceed that with the width, sorry, the mouse is a little, little fast. They do exceed that with, in the area where they have a drive aisle.
In your report, you indicated that the applicant had approached Marriott, I guess it is, about perhaps changing their concrete wall, but hadn't gotten, had not gotten a response. In staff's opinion, if there was a change to that wall by Marriott, would that still necessitate this variance request?
If they were able to come in with direct access and their driveway didn't exceed 24 feet in width, they would be able to come in, and it would not require a variance then.
And then, could we go to the slide that has the layout of the entire house? Looking for direct, so is, on this presentation, is north up?
Yes.
Okay. And in part of the staff's report, you had indicated that a reconfigur- you had indicated that a reconfiguration of the house moved the driveway completely would avoid the need for this variance. How would, where would that, how would that work? And looking at this, I'm assuming this is underground. That the parking appears to be on the ground level and then the house is above that?
That's correct. If if you can see the I can't see my mouse. The red dash setback and buffer line, if the driveway came in utilizing the existing open and didn't go into the setback and buffer on the north side and was able to access the home to the parking areas from this direction. And it would require redesign of the home as planned, certainly. But it it could meet the requirements.
And that access would still be on, looking at this presentation here, would still be on what I'm calling the right side of the property?
That's correct.
Still use Alder Lane?
That's correct.
Great. And then one more question and then I'll, we'll go to others. Is the 24 feet excess, the excess over is it, looking at the yellow, is it the up and down, the north and south that's of concern? Or the left and right, east and west? I'm confused on that.
The north and south, it would be 13 feet. That would be in excess.
I'm sorry, say that again, please.
It's the north and south. It would be 13 feet excess.
So there's 24 feet allowed and 13 excess. Does that mean we have 37 feet width there?
Yes.
Amount of the variance is requesting approval of an additional 13 feet of width for this driveway above the 24 feet allowed in the LMO. Is that a fair statement?
It is. And then it also is the area where the driveway runs parallel within the buffer.
Okay. All right. Those conclude my questions. Let's hear from other members of the board. We'll start with Mr. Johnson.
My question is, if they get the permission to take the wall down, won't everything change? Are they going to abandon this variance or, because you would be going straight into the garage doors?
Correct. I understand, I'll let the applicant answer that, but I understand that they're pursuing, they're continuing to pursue the request with the Marriott and it would be their preference to enter the property directly. But they ultimately want to proceed with their building plans and get a building permit approved. And so they are exploring both options, both the variance option and direct access through the wall.
The only thing I would recommend is that we have a safeguard against that, the ability for them to do that in the future and how the variance is proposed.
Okay.
That's to my fellow board members.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Johnson?
No.
Okay, Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, I have questions, but really it's for the applicant. Like, yeah.
All right. Ms. Bryson, any questions for staff?
Yes, sir. The first question is, are there any waivers that have been granted for this prior to the or in addition to the variance request?
No waivers.
Okay. And then the second question is, as I understand it, there's two types of variances within this one variance request. One is the width, it exceeds a minimum, I'm sorry, the maximum width of 24 feet. And then the other is that it is parallel instead of perpendicular. So there's actually two types of variances, two types of requirements that are not being met. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And then the other question has to do with the two separate letters from Forest Beach Owners Association. Can you read those two letters into the record for us?
I can.
I don't know how lengthy they are. I'm sorry. Maybe they're too, maybe they're very lengthy, but one was against the variance and the other one is in favor.
Yes. One quick second. I do not have the first one printed, but Teresa did. Thank you. This letter is the first one that you received. It is dated August 24, 2020. It's from the Forest Beach Owners Association to the homeowners, Mr. and Mrs. Ryan and Kim Stabo. It says, Dear Mr. and Mrs. Stabo, the association has been advised that you have submitted an appeal to the Board of Zoning Appeals with the town of Hilton Head Island seeking approval for a non-conforming driveway and parking area with reference to the above captioned project. In a review of the site plan submitted to the town for the BCA hearing, we have determined that the location in design of the driveway and parking area does not match the plans that were submitted to and reviewed by the association upon which our approval for this project was given, even though the date of the drawings on the two sets of plans shows an identical date of 4/23/20. In order for us to consider advising the town of anything other than denial of ARB approval for the BCA submitted plan, we must have the correct set of plans showing what you intend to construct. Once received, the association will conduct a new review of the revised plans and issue our ARB decision based upon the new documentation. Please make a note of additional items we require above. Failure to submit the requested documents for review prior to the start of construction will result in a covenant violation. Thank you for your prompt attention to this matter and please do not hesitate to contact us with any questions. Sincerely, John D. Snodgrass, Executive Director. The second letter from Forest Beach Owners Association dated August 28, 2020, that was sent to Mr. and Mrs. Ryan and Kim Stabo. And we received via email, it was sent yesterday. It says, "The association has received updated plans from your builder that correspond to your submitted appeal to the Board of Zoning Appeals with the town of Hilton Head Island seeking approval for a non-conforming driveway and parking area with reference to the above captioned project. The association has reviewed the site plan submitted to the town for the BCA hearing along with the modified plan submitted by your contractor. These plans, in conjunction with discussions with your builder and the town representatives, indicates to the association that you currently face an access problem that is partially outside of your control. The association understands that your preferred plan for driveway and garage access is the original one submitted and approved by the association. If possible, this is the ultimate design that you wish to pursue. The association also understands that at present, the lack of direct access is preventing you from following this plan and obtaining a building permit from the town. After lengthy discussion, the association has decided to defer to the town as regards to the driveway ingress egress size and placement. The association's main concern, regardless of which plan is ultimately approved, is that the material used for construction of the driveway and access to the garage is of a pervious nature and that at no time will any portion of the driveway that resides within the buffer area be utilized as a parking pad. All parking must be outside of the buffer areas. Based upon approval, but based upon this approval, the association will require that any change to the plans be submitted to the association for review. This includes any BCA requirements on the submitted plans or any changes to the plans that the BCA reviews and approves. We must also be advised in writing of the final design that has been selected and upon which the town issues a building permit. Any change to the permitted plans that the town may require must be submitted to the association for review and approval. Failure to do so will result in a covenant violation. Thank you for your cooperation in this matter and please do not hesitate to contact us with any questions. Sincerely, John D. Snodgrass, Executive Director."
Okay, thank you very much. I'll disclose for the record two things, one, or three things. One is, I have not had any contact with the Forest Beach Owners Association. I have not contacted them nor they have contacted me. I do live within the Forest Beach area and am a member of that association, but took no part in the consideration nor the development of either of these letters. So I wanted to make that disclosure for the record. My next question has to do, pardon me, with Alder Lane. I believe Mr. Contrair asked you about other properties along there using Alder Lane and you said you believe so. Can you tell us a little bit more about which properties and how many? And my concern is about the use of Alder Lane. I do walk that pathway quite often, maybe two, three times a week. So I'm familiar with it from walking there. And I'm just curious about the properties that are using either through a driveway cut or driving along that Alder Lane to get to their properties. Can you, can you give us more facts about that?
Currently, off the top of my head, I cannot. I do know that there's another undeveloped piece of property that's to the north of this address that would also either have access from Forest Beach or from Alder Lane, but it is undeveloped. I believe there is another property closer to the ocean that also utilizes Alder Lane for its access, but I can't view the property viewer at this time to verify that.
Okay. And I understand that Mr. Ryan is available to us. Can you tell us the legal status of Alder Lane as well as the legal status of the curb cut that, about which we've been provided information today, the curb cut for this particular lot?
Can you flush that out a little bit more, ma'am, about what you mean when you ask legal status?
Well, my question is whether or not it is still a street or whether it was closed as a street as part of the approval of the Marriott plan. And then secondly, what if anything did that do to the status of the curb cut for this lot?
If I may jump in here, I didn't review the information Ms. Lewis did and she has just stepped out of the room. But there was a special use. I'm going to try to paraphrase. Ms. Lewis just walked back in the room. She can maybe describe what alterations took place to Alder Lane. Sorry.
Sure. No, that's okay. And I had to step out of the room, so I didn't get to hear what Missy told you so far. But yes, these parcels, along with Marriott, were part of a conditional use review permit that was issued back in the early 90s, I believe. And as part of that, they relocated Alder Lane, the right-of-way of Alder Lane onto the Marriott property and then provided a gate code for the properties that access off of Alder Lane. And then the pathway is just simply that, just a pathway. It's not for vehicular traffic at all. Even though it's labeled, I know it's labeled Alder Lane, but it's just a pathway. How about the access to this particular lot? Was that a part of that process and permit approval? We believe it is. We're going to pull that up and double check. But yes, at the time that the conditional use review is done, it included three parcels off of Alder Lane as well as the Marriott property. Okay. But we're not sure about whether or not there is indeed permitted access or allowed access to this lot and what the width would be. Is that correct? Well, no, there was definitely access provided as part of that conditional use review when they relocated Alder Lane access onto the Marriott property. They had to provide access to the lots that had previously accessed via the Alder Lane right-of-way. But you just don't recall at this moment what type of access, the width, or any other conditions about that access? Is that correct? No, but we can pull that up for you while you continue your discussion. Okay, all right. I think those are the questions I have for the staff members that I understand to be present at this time. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bryson. Mr. White, any questions for staff?
I just have one question. When did, when did they request a variance or the wall be removed from Marriott?
That would be better asked of the applicant. I'm not aware of the timeline of which they've been pursuing that request.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, John. Ms. Lautermilch?
Yes. Ms. Bryson hit on one of my basic questions and I was kind of leaning to the words either legal easement or right-of-way, but I was curious, I am still curious what their, what the legal right to access the property via the Marriott Alder Lane, you know, exactly to understand that legal right. So that was one question. The other, the whole issue here to me obviously revolves around restricting utilization of the property. And in staff's report, they mention, or they discuss the proposed side of the house as well as five parking spaces being required. Is that requirement, a requirement of the town based on square footage? Or is it more a desire of, in this case, the applicant based on the size of the house? Talk to me a little bit about the parking space requirement.
The parking required is based on the home size. And it is in the LMO. And there are additional parking requirements within the Forest Beach neighborhood character overlay. So it is due to the size.
Okay. And what is the square footage of this house as proposed?
I'll have the applicant speak to that for specifics. There's some decking that gets counted in the square footage as well as the finished square footage of the home, which I believe the square footage of the home is somewhere in the neighborhood of 4,072 plus additional exterior decking in excess of 600 feet that I believe brings it into the, how we would total it around 4,500 range. But the applicant can give those numbers specifically.
Okay. And I'll ask the applicant the same thing when we get there. How how involved did you get into discussions about reconfiguring the house or the driveway? Did you pursue that or just make the assumption that it could be done?
We talked with them about a couple of iterations that could avoid the variance request. However, it still remained difficult to cite the house of this size on the lot with those configurations. But the applicant can speak more to the house design and what those changes would be and why they're difficult.
Okay. And again, I'll ask the applicant the same thing maybe, but is this house as it is designed relatively typical of the other homes in the neighborhood? Are they similar sized?
In generalities, I would say in general, yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I don't have anything else.
Thank you. Dr. Fonder, any questions for staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Only one. According to the LMO, driveways may run perpendicular through the buffer but not parallel to it. Why? Why is that?
I would say that the reason why is that the buffer's intent is for a vegetative buffer between adjacent properties or uses. And that the idea is that driveways can run perpendicular, so they just cut through the buffer. And then you still have the greatest buffer width available for that vegetation.
Is there a maximum width for a driveway? So if you cut through the buffer, how wide could I make my cut through?
In Forest Beach, 24 feet.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, Dr. Fonder? Apparently not. Just one more question on my part, Missy, and then we'll go to the applicant. The, am I correct that in the highlighted yellow area, the buffer or what is on the the, the buffer or what is on the east side of the property is simply Alder Lane? And then this concrete wall with what looks like ivy growing on it? Is that correct?
Yeah, so let me find my cursor again. Hold on. So here is where that concrete wall with the ivy growing on it is located. I lost my cursor again. I was, I was hovering over it, but yes, okay. It is, you can see the pathway and it is east of the pathway there is where that concrete wall is located. And, and yes, it has ivy growing on it.
Okay, and the shaded area is the pathway of Alder Lane?
That's correct, that is the pathway.
Okay, so what makes up the buffer between the house or the driveway? And, and the wall is simply Alder Lane and, and the wall itself. There's not a lot of vegetation.
Right, and that, the property line is right, my cursor is right now.
Got it, okay, thank you. All right, anyone else with any other questions for staff before we move on to the applicant? Thank you.
Yeah, Missy, just based on what you just said, I'm sorry. Is this proposed driveway would go right up to the property line? In that yellow shaded section?
That's correct.
Is that in and of it? Well, that, that would be a variance because you're already in the buffer.
You're in the buffer, yeah. I would consider it, yeah, I mean, it's technically a driveway. It's more of a maneuvering lane to be able to get in and out.
Okay, but it would, it would abut the property line?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any, any other questions, the board, the staff? At this time, hearing none. We'll go on to the applicant. Mike Leicher, you're, you're on for your 20 minutes of fame and glory, so please tell us what you want to hear. Thank you.
Right, so, so originally the Sables had submitted a plan to the town that the driveway obviously didn't work. So they had redesigned the house a second time. This is actually the redesign of the property at a cost of about $35,000 to, to get this rendition. You know, looking at the highlighted section of the variance where they said we're running parallel or into the buffer zone. If I was coming straight through that wall, that wouldn't be considered a variance area. That area would be able to be incorporated as driveway without getting a variance. So my question is, yes, we're impacting that and that's highlighted in yellow for a variance, but that area would be impacted regardless if we were to come straight through. Mr. Johnson had asked if, if we were to work on getting the approval through the Marriott to come straight into the property and, and get rid of that 23-foot wide variance portion. I'm proactively working on that daily. I started that conversation with the Marriott and I got all my documentation on July the 8th and was able to have corporate meetings with, with the high up at Marriott, meaning the corporate level of real estate transactions and everything on 7/20. I usually touch back with them about every two weeks just to see if we've made any progress and it's still something that they're working forwards on. I'm just not sure what that outcome is going to be. So I have to proceed on, on behalf of my clients to obtain a building permit. And, and my understanding is that part of the second design, you know, I think Kevin had drawn that driveway coming straight through the wall, thinking the town owned that wall since it used to be Alder Lane. I think that's where, where things get a little bit complicated on the access of this property. If the wall was not there, we wouldn't be applying for a variance. We would be bringing that driveway straight in. So it's just, it's a very unusual circumstances that, that, you know, I, I feel that, you know, the impact is just basically that little tiny horizontal thing connecting the driveway. That's the way I look at it, because the impact would be the same on that 23-foot wide section that goes to the property line that's highlighted. So yes, I've been working with the Marriott. Let's see. So there is one other house located on the Alder Lane. That would be number five. That is the, the home of Frank Guido Bono. That is the oceanfront house. And if I look at the way his is put in, I don't know if there's things that were grandfathered or when the documentation was incorporated on running that parallel, but that house does have parking that runs parallel in the buffer zone. So the accessibility, you know, per the local Marriott that I've dealt with, these lots do have access through the Marriott. They have a separate gate where they get a key card as owners that, that Kim and Ryan currently have to get in and out through the gate. They have a separate gate that is for the Alder Lane access. I believe that's all I have, so I'm open for, for questions.
Okay, I'll start with one. Missy, could we call up the, the picture that had the entire property shown?
Here it is.
There you go, thank you. Mr. Leicher, staff has talked about reconfiguring the driveway to avoid this, the need for this variance. Could you explain to us from a builder's standpoint how that might or might not work?
Well, I think they've redesigned the house for a second time. I'm not sure why the architect, I can't speak for him, would have that driveway coming through the wall other than he was under the impression, and, and again, I'm just, you know, assuming that he's had a conversation that that wall was maybe the ownership of Forest Beach Association or the town of Hilton Head. Later in the process, that's why it didn't start until July when I found out that, you know, trying to find out who owned the wall, it took a little bit to find out. And then Marriott came back saying that they did own the wall. So my question is, where was the original width of Alder Lane? Was it at that wall or was it past the wall? Did they relinquish that? When they relinquished that road, did they give up access to that property?
Well, I guess what I'm trying to get at is staff has recommended denial of your application because it does not, staff assertion is that this particular piece of property is not effectively prohibited or unreasonably restricted from its utilization. And that could be, the home design could be altered to provide access from the north side of the home, which would eliminate the driveway in the front adjacent use buffer. So my question to you is, how would that work? And is it in fact a practical or feasible alternative?
I believe at this time the Sables would like to pursue the variance aspects. Could it be designed? It probably could, but it would really impair the design on how they laid their house out to function, meaning their pool and their deck being on that private side of that lot being the north side. So I believe, you know, my personal understanding is this would meet all the criteria for a variance because, and I realize they say the design aspects of it. I think they've done a good faith effort of doing a redesign and spending money to have this second rendition of their home. There was an original one that was submitted to the town of Hilton Head that was approved by the Forest Beach Association, which really missed a lot of the marks. So I get that. So we did go back to the drawing board or the owners decided to use the architect to redesign the house to, to minimize things.
All right, you, you stated in your testimony that the owners had spent an additional $35,000 on redesign. They have said it, but could you explain to the board again why that redesign was necessary?
Right, they had, on the original design, they were utilizing the original curb cut. They were coming down, so the garage doors would be relocated to the south side of the building. So they were impacting the buffer basically on the south side of that property all the way down to get access to the three-car garage.
This redesign then moved the driveway to the north to avoid that?
Correct, yeah, we've done everything to minimize the impact. I, I mean, we've, we've really streamlined it. You know, we pushed it as far as we could go to utilize the plan. I mean, we're, we're minimizing, you know, and I see that, you know, the yellow section there when we're looking at that, I realize that's like an impact buffer thing, but if I'm coming straight in, that area is impacted anyhow, but it's okay to do that. If I'm coming straight through the wall, that is no longer a variance area, that yellow section. So I, you know, when it, when they put that as a variance, I'm thinking to myself, if I come straight in, that, that area is impacted anyhow. So we're just really talking that small section where we turn to get to that parking pad or driveway pad.
And, and so in the best possible scenario here, Marriott would be willing to take down a portion of that wall and your development of this property would have a straight shot into the parking and that would avoid the need for this variance. Is that correct?
That is, that is correct. And I'm still going to proactively work to have that. I would love to modify this and, and get the approval from the Marriott during the course of construction and, and tell the town we're, we're going back to the original straight in. I just don't know if I'm going to get that answer. I'm dealing with a company that has many levels of like land acquisition, real estate acquisition. There's a lot of things that are tied in. It's not just one called the Marriott and they sit down and give you an answer. So I've been proactively working on that and will continue to.
Thank you. We'll go on now to questions from the other board members and we'll do it in a reverse order. We did questions to staff, so we'll start with Dr. Hannah Ponder. Question for the, for the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. How long do you have to get an answer from Marriott? What's your timetable here?
Well, I have no idea. I mean, they, they had told me back in, you know, July when we were working on this that, you know, they should be able to expedite it without having board meetings, like formal board meetings. I reach out to Massimo, which is the general manager over at the Marriott Grand Ocean, the one on the island here, and he's, he's kind of like the liaison that I've been dealing with, with corporate and everything. He's receptive to it.
That's not really what I'm asking, excuse me, that's not really what I'm asking. I'm asking what your timetable is for trying to build this house? If you got, if you got an okay tomorrow?
Yes. If I had an okay, if I had a.
When you, when you're going to build the house, when are you going to build the house if you could?
I would, I would start within one month. I need to, because what I need to do is there's a cut and fill site because on the north end of that property, the, the property is low. And with the height of the roof, I'm cutting that lot down. So the garage is around 13 feet in elevation. So I need to preload that site and let that site sit for one month before I can start digging for footings. So we would be starting within, within four to five weeks of, of getting a set up prints with the, with the permit.
Thank you. That's all for me right now, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, I had muted myself. Thank you. Ms. Ponder, Ms. Loudermilk, questions for the applicant?
Okay, yes, just, just one somewhat following up on Dr. Ponder's. And again, focusing on the utilization of the site. Back to the if. If there could be straight in access from the driveway or of the driveway, it sounds to me like that would eliminate the running parallel issue relative to the variance. Would it also though eliminate the excess square footage component of the variance? Would, would that excess square footage disappear if it could run straight in?
It would because you're going to have setbacks, you're going to have angle setbacks from your roof, from your roof lines at, at 20 degrees. So it would drastically change the design of the house to shift that over or to kind of rotate it to have the garages come in the other way?
Okay, so you, you, you feel that if the lot could have that direct straight in access, it would eliminate all aspects of the variance?
That is correct, absolutely.
Okay, thank you, that was my, my question.
Great, thank you.
Jerry? Jerry?
Yes, Charlie.
Jerry, I don't mean to interrupt. Can you hear me?
I can, go ahead.
We only have 24 minutes left, just, just to remind you.
Thank you. All right, John White?
Just, just one clarification. So you have, you have no idea whether, from a timing standpoint, whether Marriott would respond to your request now or a month from now or a year from now? Correct?
That is correct. I, I would not know their timeframe because they can't give me a timeframe. I think they're working on it proactively at a corporate level, but I think there's a lot of layers to the Marriott.
Yeah.
But I do have all the contacts and I'm more than happy to share that with the town or anybody on the board.
So, so this request for a variance really will, will drive your, your time, your timeframe?
That is correct. I mean, there, you know, obviously things have changed with materials and the COVID thing. I would have loved to have been able to start this a while back, but you know, we are where we are right now. So I'm sure the cost of building is going to be considerable from what I've seen on the materials that I've purchased, but they're still anxious to, you know, the Sables have been coming down here for some, some years. They have a, a place over Point Comfort. They just really want to build a home that they can come to and make their, you know, basically their home, their, their full-time residence. So I am just trying to proceed the best that I can to make that happen for them.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have, Jerry.
Okay, and thanks to Charlie Walzak for pointing out the time. Let's try to make our questions and responses as brief as possible. Ms. Bryson?
Yes, sir, thank you. Ms. Loudermilk had asked the staff about the square footage. Can you tell us the square footage of the structure? And that's the first question, sorry.
I can, so the, so the heated square footage is 4,072 square feet.
Okay, and with the exterior decking?
4,522.
Okay, and how many bedrooms do we include?
That'll have four bedrooms.
Okay, all right. So the square footage is what's driving the need for space for five vehicles? Is that correct?
No, I mean, well, the space, that is correct, yes. The, the need for five spaces is from the square footage of the house. That is, you know, this is going to be a, probably a one or two-car family home, but to meet the requirements, we needed the five parking spots.
Okay, and there is a third bay and there are no vehicles shown on the drawing, but there's a third bay which requires some of this extra concrete padding or pea gravel. I can't remember what you're using, but.
We're going to use, we're going to use pea gravel.
Okay, so the third bay, what is the purpose of that?
The third bay, right, the third bay, so I was even on the one plan not showing any driveway or piece on in front of that and, and we decided to add that from further review, which is outside of the buffer and meets all the criteria. That is going to be used for a golf cart, lawn equipment, stuff of that nature. It will not be for vehicular, vehicular parking.
All right, and, and the question was asked, if you had the straight in access, what would be the width of the driveway if the concrete wall were moved?
It'd be the 23 feet.
Okay, all right. Those are the questions I have for you. And thank you, sir.
Thank you. Moving on to Mr. Walzak.
Yes, I have a question about the site plan. It doesn't seem like it's complete. If you look at the entrance of the driveway, kind of the lines end. So how much of that area is going to be driveway, you know, in front of the house?
In front of the house?
Yeah.
Well, basically I could, I could do away without having anything in front of the third garage to the south of the property and have that 23 feet by, you know, have that a 23-foot width.
All right.
But that, but that third, that third bay garage is outside of the, outside of the buffer zone, so we just decided to incorporate that.
Okay. I also noticed that trees outside of the property are going to be removed. What, I don't understand that.
I believe that was marked up by Arbor Nature because the town wanted to participate in a few trees being removed.
All right. The other comment I have here is that obviously this, to me, this comes under the, the, the idea of being a self-imposed hardship. And everyone else has touched on the fact that you could have redesigned the house to accommodate the existing access. So in order for me to consider voting for a, an approval of this variance, I would say you'd have to give us something. In other words, if there's, if you're going to take away some buffer, well, then maybe you've got to put some buffer in between the property and the, and the path or, or some other, in other words, off your property. That to me would be a reasonable compromise. So that's, that's all I'm saying. In other words, the hardship here was created, was self-created. The house certainly could have been designed differently. And so that's, those are my comments.
Thank you, Charlie. Bob Johnson?
Yeah, getting back to Dr. Ponder's question, I think her question was how long this is going to take you to build the house approximately?
This house probably would take about 10 to 11 months.
Okay, so you've got almost a year to continue negotiating, correct?
That, that's correct, and I will proactively be doing that and have done.
And you, if, if we were to grant the variance, you would obviously start. If we were not to grant the variance, would you start anyway?
I wouldn't be, well, I wouldn't be able to because I wouldn't have a building permit from the town.
Okay, all right. So if you get, if you, if we grant the variance and you continue negotiating with the Marriott and you get that you get that approval from the Marriott to come straight in, you're 100%, we're 100% sure you're going to abandon the driveway that's existing to the top of the page. Is that correct?
I would, that is absolutely correct. I could notarize a letter stating that would be the case.
So you're not going to have an in and an out, a circular driveway or a double cut?
Absolutely not. Straight in, straight out.
So I don't think I have any more questions.
Thank you, Bob. Unless any other board members have an additional question, we'll go to rebuttal by the staff. Thank you, Mr. Leicher. Missy, do you have a rebuttal that you want to speak to?
I just have, I didn't do the research, but I'm going to report out that we didn't find a map that went along with that PD2. So we don't exactly know exactly how the lots were supposed to be accessed. And all we can do is continue to treat it as an adjacent use buffer. And that is how it's portrayed in this request.
Okay, thank you. And board members have any questions for Missy on that report? Go ahead.
Yes, sir. I had a couple of questions and it sounds as though neither the staff attorney nor anyone else in the community development staff can answer the questions that I asked about the legal requirements. I think that's what you're saying, Ms. Lewis, but I just want to make sure.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question of Mr. Leicher?
You certainly may.
Quickly, if you don't get this variant, what's going to happen with this project? Are they going to redesign it? Are they going to build the house? And what are, what are they going to do if you don't get it?
Well, I think they're going to go to the next level and probably retain legal action. They're going to, they're, they want to pursue this house. They've redesigned it for a second time and they're in love with this plan. And they want to be part of the Hilton Head community, which they've been for years. And I think that they're going to, to pursue to use this plan. I mean, ideally, in a perfect world, I'll just get a call from the Marriott today and I can give you guys a call back and say they've given us the right to go through there and it's a moot point. But I'm just trying to proceed in getting their house built. Once again, I'll, I'll give you a certified letter stating that if I get that approval and I could share all my documentations with you on a weekly basis on the coordination and communication with the Marriott.
Okay.
Trying to make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I have another question too now, now that that was brought up. Is that okay? Really, what's the rush? Why not reach for the Marriott to make a decision and then move forward? I don't, I don't, and if they say no, well, then this, this variance request would have, let's say, a little more validity, in my point.
Right. I mean, you know, again, working with the Marriott, I have no idea what their timeframe is and how many levels that has to go through to get approval on there. It's a hard question to ask them, you know, how long is it going to take? Well, we're working on it. They seem very receptive from every conversation I've had. I've never had anybody say, well, we usually don't do that or we're not willing to do that. It seems that everybody that I've had meetings with or corporate meetings with, they've been really receptive to it. I think they're just trying to work out the formalities on, on how many pieces of Marriott actually have their hands on that section of wall that can make that decision.
Okay. Any additional question, Charlie?
No, I just, I, I mean, so if, if this had to wait a couple of months until they made a decision, that's, that's my main question. What, what's the rush?
Right. I wouldn't want to be sitting here redoing this again in a year saying, well, we didn't get that and can we revisit this? I mean, it's, you know, they've been, they've been working on this house for over a year. You know, through plans in the middle. We started way back a year ago doing that. I, I totally get the first plan, the architect completely missed everything. I didn't bring the owner to the architect. I've just been thrown in the middle.
How long has Marriott been, how long has Marriott been contemplating this?
Since July 8th, I started my communications because we submitted the plans, the second round of plans to the town and they came back with, with the things that were not going to work. And so at that point, I had reached out trying to find out who owned the wall to begin with, if it was property of the Forest Beach Association, if it was the town of Hilton Head, or if it was the Marriott. So I finally get the answer from the Marriott that they own, that they have the ownership of that wall. So on July 8th, I started the comp, all the, all the communications with the Marriott Grand Ocean. And then by 7:20, July 20th, I was having corporate conference calls with the high-ups.
Okay, Mr. Leicher, I don't mean to cut you off, but your answer is you've been working on it since July 8th. We need to keep moving forward to
Sure.
your timeframe. Charlie, any additional questions from you?
No, no, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. We're now at the point in our meeting where we would have a public comment. Teresa, I believe you reported earlier, we have no public comment other than the two letters that have been presented to the board.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, that concludes the public hearing portion of this meeting. We're now at the point where we would have discussion among the board members, leading to a motion and a second for action to be taken. We'll go through and I'll ask each member of the board to give us their thoughts. I'll just start by saying it appears to me that the primary reason for staff's recommendation for denial is that it, the staff does not believe there are extraordinary and exceptional conditions that pertain to this property. We've heard testimony that the applicant is pursuing with Marriott the change to the wall, but no response has been before them yet. Apparently, the owner has had the property redesigned to minimize the impact. And so it seems to me those are factors that could be taken into consideration, but I'd be glad to hear from other board members. So let's start with Mr. Johnson for any comments, feelings about this application.
My common sense tells me that, and, and being an architect, that they've made a good faith effort in trying to get a reasonable sized house on a fairly small lot. If there are way, if there was a way to legally give a variance with the caveat, if they get a permission from the Marriott, that the variance would be rescinded. I'm not a legalese person, as you probably can tell, and I just think that this should be worked out so that the, the applicant can go forward with their, their, you know, from July 20th to, to now is not a long time to negotiate with a conglomerate like the Marriott. And my guess is that it'll take a few months, but it'll eventually be worked out. And I'm assuming they offered to build a wall where the opening used to be and replant it. But that's all assumptions. This seems to be a logical, common sense thing to grant a variance and, and let these people get on with their lives.
Thank you. Mr. Walzak?
Well, I think I've basically stated my position already that, excuse me, that I think they should wait for the Marriott to make a decision. If the decision is not in their favor, I think it would make us look, it would make the granting of the variance somewhat easier. Again, I, I see this as a self-imposed hardship. And it's just a matter of time that, that Marriott will make a decision. So I don't have any problem with Bob's idea in if, in other words, if that can be done, you know, grant the variance subject to. But then the site plan would change. You know, and like he said, are, are they going to close up the hole in the wall where it is now and make a new one? How's that all going to be treated? So that's, that's where I stand.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Bryson?
Yes, sir. I, I'm very concerned about granting this variance because of the large amount of space that would be affected by the variance. As shown in the staff report, the highlighted yellow area. And it's essentially two types of variances. One is the width of the driveway. And then the other is the not being perpendicular, but parallel to the space. I'm also concerned that we still have, in my view, legal questions about the size of any curb cut allowed for this lot. And whichever way we go, we still would have that question about the width of that allowed curb cut. So I'm, I'm very concerned about that. It, it, I appreciate that the homeowners have been working on their plans and tried to address some questions about this. But I think that there are other ways to do it and still comply with the requirements of the LMO. In addition, these requirements are part of an overlay district. So they are additional requirements on top of the underlying zoning district, which means that there was an intent to have extra requirements. And so I think we should take very seriously granting a variance to extra requirements for an overlay district. So I'm, I'm, I'm not inclined to approve this variance for all of those reasons. And for the reasons set forth in the staff report, which have been testified about today, solely based on the evidence today. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. White?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of things. I think, you know, it, it seems reasonable to me that the Marriott affirmative decision would make a much cleaner design. Though that being said, I, I don't, I don't see the issue of either or. I think if they were to say yes to the removal of the wall, clearly it would be a better design. Having said that, I also agree with everybody else that, you know, I'm, I think it's appropriate to, to wait for a clear decision. This was in front of us would be significantly different had we had a decision from, a negative decision from Marriott. That's all I have.
Okay, Ms. Loudermilk?
Yeah, without restating, I, I absolutely agree with, with what Mr. White just said. I think if the Marriott responds negatively, then there is restrictive utilization of the property. And I'd consider the variance rather strongly. But I, I think we need to hear from Marriott first. So I think it's a premature, premature timing.
Thank you, Dr. Ponder.
For the sake of time, I would say I agree with Ms. Loudermilk.
All right. What I'm hearing is a building consensus to wait a little bit. I, my rules and procedures are over on the shelf that I can't reach where I'm sitting. I believe we have the ability to table an application for a period of time. Mr. Leicher, I know you're, you and your client are anxious to proceed with construction, but and you can't get a building permit until you have either a resolution of this application or a decision from the Marriott. But how would you feel about if the BCA tabled your application for a period of, say, 60 days or whatever you thought was necessary? I'm hearing sentiment that if Marriott says yes, you've got a clear shot to proceed, or if they say no, then there seems to be among some of the members sentiment to support your application.
Yeah, I mean, you know, part of the thing, I, I get the concern, you know, from John, Colleen, Ann and Lisa. Meaning that it would, they would be viewing it differently if the Marriott just came back with a no. I'm under the premise, I have to move forwards for my clients. And so I'm just under the premise that the worst thing they can say is no. So if they say no, then would you support the variants? Because it sounds like you would be if, if the Marriott came back to me and said no. So can we just move forwards with saying that I'm working due diligence? I will share with every one of you the correspondence and emails and CCU on everything that I've been doing with the Marriott to date and in the future. I mean, it's, you know, again, to do construction on this house, I'm going to have to preload the site for 30 days. And then there, there's a bunch of work that goes on before we even start going vertical with anything. And I'm just trying to.
All right, I got it. Thank you. All right. Steve and Ryan, are you still with us?
Yes, sir.
Could you speak to the board about the potential for doing what I guess I would call, somebody used the term, a, a conditional variance or a subject to? Do we have that authority?
The consensus is that yes, a conditional variance is something that the BCA does have the power to grant.
And would that be couched in terms of a time period?
Are, are you looking to create a conditional variance or are you looking to table this discussion for another BCA hearing?
I may be wrong, but the sense I got from the discussion of the board members would, was that the preference would be to table for some reasonable period of time. But also then hearing from the applicant that he's not excited about that prospect and wants to try to move forward one way or the other. So maybe, maybe a conditional variance is the direction we need to think. If any of the other board members have a have a comment about that, I'll be glad to hear it.
Yeah, I'd like to make one, if I may. Uh, if I'm not mistaken, yeah, if I'm not mistaken, you don't need a building permit to put overburden on that site. You can, you can pile up dirt there now if you have to consider the subsoil conditions. So, and that's gonna-
The town has told me differently. The town has told me differently. I cannot do any construction, any site, cut, fill, anything until I have a building permit. That was verbatim from the town. I could clear, I could clear trees. I've had all the approvals, and I've had some of the trees removed. Some are obviously there until I had a finalized plan, some of the, you know, a couple of small live oaks. But as far as doing any site work, they said absolutely you cannot do anything until you have a building permit.
So they, they allowed cutting of trees, but not piling up dirt?
That's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
Please do.
Uh, Mr. Leicher, let's just say that you're correct. The worst thing the Marriott can say is no, we're not gonna remove the wall, which would, which would probably influence some of our decisions being here. But if, if we were to do, instead of tabling, if we were to do a conditional variance, right?
Correct.
Does anything, construction-wise, and I'm, I'm, I'm out of my depth here, that's why I'm asking, change, right?
No.
So you start, you start to work on, you start to work on this house, and they say yes, or they say no. Does anything about what you're doing change? So if we got, let's just say, it took them a long time. You said 11 or, 11 or so months to build this house. What if, nine months in, or 10 months in, they come and say, you know what, we're gonna take down the wall?
Oh, I would, I would, I would-
Would you have all, started to use, you know, intrude into the buffer?
Well, I would, I, I would take that area out, since it's just piece stone. I could reclaim that buffer, you know, on the, on the plans. It also has a bunch of plannings that go in that buffer that are not, you know, and there's a landscape architect plan that goes along with that. Um, I would reclaim that area.
Okay, so, so without much, but without much damage or, or trouble, let's just say, you could, if you had already gone into it, you could put it back?
Right, it's already been impacted. It used to be a driveway, there's no vegetation there. It was the original driveway that came in, so there is impact. If you look at the photos, you'll see that it's just, you know, weeds with dirt.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And to answer the one question too, we, we wanna mitigate that sectional wall that we're removing and replace that where the, where the curb cut exists currently. So yes, we would be giving the Marriott back that same linear footed wall.
Thank you. Ms. Bryson, you wanted to speak?
Yes, sir, thank you, sir. Um, asking Mr. Ryan, um, if I wanna make a motion to continue this matter to a date certain, um, would it be proper under our rules of procedure to have a motion to postpone to a date and time certain? Or what would be the procedure we should follow to do that?
It's for the next scheduled meeting. Give me a moment, please. Uh, yeah, specifically laid out, a motion cannot be postponed further than the next regular meeting. So, um, if we do want to create a situation where we have more time and hopefully have more information about what's happening with some of the collateral issues, uh, this could be moved, um, to the next, the next meeting of the BCA.
So-
Chairman?
Approximately a month.
Can you-
Hold on, hold on. Are you done, Mr. Ryan? I'm sorry, someone-
Oh, I'm, I'm complete, yes, sir.
Okay, who was trying to-
This is Bob.
I was trying to, I'm sorry, Bob.
Go ahead.
Apologize. I was trying to get, uh, um, Mr. Ryan to tell us what would be the proper motion. Um, so would it be a motion to postpone, table, or continue the matter to, and Ms. Haley will have to help me with the date of our next regularly scheduled meeting. So would that be the proper form of the motion?
Like, yes, yeah, a motion to postpone, a vote on the issue to the next scheduled BCA meeting.
Okay, and do we know that date certain? Because I, I understand we have to say a date certain. Maybe Ms. Haley can help us with that, and, and then, uh, Mr. Chair, I'll turn it back over to, I think it was Mr. Johnson maybe asking a question.
I move that we postpone our decision until the next scheduled meeting.
I second that.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Uh, do we know from staff whether we'll have a September meeting? I guess if we postpone it till then, we will, whether there are other, uh, applications that come in or not.
That's correct. We, we do have some pending, uh, applications. We'll know, uh, later this week if they come through, and, uh, if we have, uh, information for the September meeting.
And that date, I believe, is September 28th?
It is. If we have, uh, multiple requests, we may need a different time, but, um, but tentatively it's September 28th at 2:30, but that may change.
And we have, we have before the board a motion and a second to postpone to the next, uh, regular meeting, which is currently set for September 28th. If that motion passes, then we have business before the board for its next meeting. So the, the only question, if I understand correctly, is whether that would be September 28th or some other date. Is that right, Missy?
That's correct.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to postpone consideration of this variance to the next regular meeting date, which is currently scheduled for September 28th at 2:30. Um, I'm just reading here, can be amended, requirements are already vote, motion to open. So is there any discussion among the board members on the motion before us? Hearing one, Teresa, would you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Johnson?
In favor of the motion.
Mr. Walczak?
I'm in favor of the motion.
Mr. Katria?
For the motion.
Ms. Bryson?
For the motion.
Mr. White?
For the motion.
Ms. Lautermilch?
For the motion.
Dr. Ponder?
For the motion.
Okay, by a vote of 7-0, the, uh, motion to postpone until the next regular meeting has passed. Mr. Leicher, I know this may not be what you wanted, but I think it's, uh, probably as good as you're gonna get today, and, uh, so we look to hear from you again at the end of September. Uh, since we're over our 10:30 target date, or time, uh, I'd like to exercise some chairman's prerogative here and, uh, let us defer the waiver report and, in fact, until the next meeting. Uh, is there any other discussion to come before the board? Hearing that, I declare this meeting adjourned.
Alright, thank you for your time.
Thank you.